You want to show our respect. Hundreds of years after the first treaties were signed, they remain relevant today. May they guide our decisions and our actions. We commit to learn, to educate, to honor sacred places, to take action towards real truth and reconciliation. Migwich.
Mr. Boston, go ahead, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff and other attendees. This morning I will be presenting a brief overview of the Water Quality Monitoring Program Guidance that Greenland and Dillon Consulting have developed with our project partners. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes, we can.
Are you seeing the presenter view or the? The presentation? I'm sorry?
Seeing the presenter view.
Okay, let me change that. Okay. Is that coming through now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you.
We have a couple of black bars on it for some reason. Across the top and on the side.
Okay. See if I can change that somehow.
That's better.
Is that better? Okay.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'll start with our problem statement. So data is currently collected by volunteers from different organizations and lake associations across the township. However, without a centralized approach, monitoring location, frequency and parameter consistency, maintaining and analyzing data, ensuring data quality and training and coordination and engagement of volunteers may be maybe compromised. So this results in compromised data quality and reduced ability to rely on the data for science-based decision support. So our project overview, so our approach to to address this concern, Greenland Consulting and Dillon Consulting were retained to develop a water quality monitoring program and guidance for the township of Georgian Bay. So our approach was to design and monitoring access and water, sorry, to we designed a system to design, monitor and access water quality protection across inland lakes and Georgian Bay nearshore waters. Our guidance recommends monitoring locations and stations for 20 inland water bodies and 15 Georgian Bay nearshore locations. It identifies monitoring parameters and protocols to be followed. It addresses key stressors and possible solution options. It establishes a framework for data collection, analysis and cumulative effects adaptive management responses. Volunteers play a key pivotal role in the program and with centralized support. So some key components of our plan. So an integrated monitoring framework, this employs conventional field sampling and pilots the use of satellite derived water quality data to provide spatial and temporal coverage of the region. It's a collaborative structure, so volunteers, as I mentioned, are central. Plus, there's engagement of stakeholders through a water quality stakeholder committee and a water quality science advisory committee as well as staff members. It's a tiered approach, so there's priority one and priority, or sorry, priority A and B. Priority A are areas of concern and priority B are reference sites that are used in comparison. We recommend 20 monitoring locations for inland waters and 15 locations in the Georgian Bay nearshore. So altogether, this results in about 87 stations within those monitoring locations initially, and this can be changed over time. It's a data-driven decision-making support, so data must be centrally managed and uploaded to data stream. And we recommend the use of threats as a platform to visualize and analyze the water quality data, enabling evidence-based policy development. We introduce the idea of a cumulative effects framework. This recommends a tiered adaptive management approach and guidance on establishment of thresholds and triggers for mitigation actions. And those would be would be refined by the Science Advisory Committee over time for each individual location. Training, resources and data quality. So this part describes the training resources and protocols for communication and coordination needed to ensure high-quality data that can be used to support decision-making. Parameters and frequency, we've provided guidelines that describe the frequency of monitoring the parameters to be considered, the equipment and methods that are needed. We've tried to integrate a technology-centric component to this. So we're introducing the idea of using satellite data and machine learning. Greenland has developed a water quality monitoring technology for using satellite data. It's available through our threats platform and it's being made available to this program as a pilot. So threats provides access to that monitoring data and and analysis tools. Cumulative Effects Adaptive Management Framework. Cumulative effects is a combined incremental impacts on water quality and aquatic ecosystems resulting from multiple stressors acting over space and time. The Water Quality Program provides a multi-tiered framework for detecting and responding to changes in water quality. So this table provides a bit of an example of what that tiered approach would look like, where you would have multiple levels of thresholds and prescribed actions that would occur when each of those levels levels are triggered. And again, the Science Advisory Committee would be charged with using this as a framework or as a template and implementing a type of approach at each each location. Some final thoughts. Program makes use of historical sampling locations, stations and stations in advance of exist to to advance existing monitoring records. So we wanted to ensure that that data integrity is maintained and that the new monitoring would be a continuation of existing records. We wanted to make sure that it creates cohesion between volunteer groups. It's important to establish a long-term approach to data management to ensure consistency, perpetuity and data quality. Individual samples are of little value. You really need to have that continuity and record to be able to see changes over time. The approach that we provided provides a mechanism for identifying and addressing water quality issues through a tiered adaptive management cumulative effects framework. It's envisioned that the formation of the, sorry, it envisions the formation of township staff roles and two committees charged with implementing the program. It pilots the technology that I've described to assist in water quality, identifying water quality issues, storing, accessing and analyzing data. And it identifies resources needed to implement successful water quality program. So in in conclusion, I'd like to acknowledge our team members and and the staff that we worked with with the township as well as the volunteers who came out to the stakeholder workshop that we started the the project with. They shared a lot of their knowledge and insights into existing water quality issues and the monitoring that's been undertaken thus far. Unfortunately, a lot of our technical team are not are not present, but I can take a few questions at a high level, as long as we don't get into too much of the limnology and lake science, but I can give an over. I can answer some questions on the general program that we developed.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Boston. If you could stop sharing your screen. In the meantime, I'm going to go to Counselor Bocheck if he has a question.
Yes, thank you very much for for what you've given us today. I have a few questions, again, high level. Hopefully you can give me some answers to it. With respect to water quality that enters our township via the Muskoka Watershed or the Trent Severn Waterway or the flushing that happens in Georgian Bay with waters coming from other sources. Would there be a relationship with other agencies? SSEA, the Muskoka Watershed Council. Any interaction with with those groups?
Yeah, we we think that it is important to maintain and enhance all of those relationships, so we have recommended two staff positions or as possibly a way or a mechanism for for continuing those relationships and ensuring that there isn't overlap in efforts because it's it's important. I mean, the watershed concept means that everybody is kind of downstream of something, so yeah, those those relationships are important to maintain.
Counsel Cooper, please.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I guess a couple of just quick things. One is I don't see a list of the actual locations. Is that in your slide deck or somewhere else that I could access that and council could access that it might?
It it's not in the slide deck, but it is in the in the document that we provided. Not sure if that's been circulated to everyone at this point or not.
I must be missing it in my agenda.
In other words, we have we have received that information. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we've we've provided some maps and there there is a table that lists all of the locations and the stations within those.
All right, so the second, we're looking for that report. I wanted to find the locations. Can you share? So this slide deck that you did today is part of what has been sent to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. This is kind of a high-level overview of the approach and the components that we included in our in our guidance document for the monitoring program.
The other comment. Okay. The only other thing I would like to suggest is that we, in terms of managing this program, I'm not sure that our township needs to actually hire people to run this. We need somebody that's qualified and somebody that could be a, I would hope, a contracted manager at some point as opposed to in-house. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Boston at this point? We will certainly have more discussion as we go along. Counselor Predko, please.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Just one question. I don't think we, and I don't remember seeing it in the details of the the long report, but just about the the pilot of the satellite data and the accuracy and whether or not that can down the road help to remove some of the the manual sampling.
Well, I we don't necessarily see it as a mechanism for removing of manual sampling, but it gives you a different perspective. The the satellite uses satellite water quality monitoring is is based on a machine learning-based approach, so we have to train the the model using field data and it is, you know, it is enhanced by, you know, continuous sampling sampling and and retraining, updating that training periodically. So we don't see it as a replacement, but it definitely allows you to to get that spatial perspective of water quality and it allows you to introduce synthetic stations. So that means you could put in additional stations that are derived from that satellite data to allow you to see change over time at in areas, locations of interest.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this point, I don't think we have any more questions for you, Mr. Boston, but it may change as the morning continues. Thank you very much for your presentations. Greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Next in our agenda, Gloucester Pool Cottage Association. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Gilmore. I'm a cottager here on Gloucester Pool. Do I have to hold it down? I'm also an environmental scientist. I'm from the US. I'm run a research lab at the Smithsonian Institution. I'm an environmental chemist by training, so I I have some experience doing these sorts of things. What I, so what I'd like to do today is first, thank you so much for giving us 10 minutes to talk. Try not to take the whole thing. And there's two points I want to get across in my presentation. The first one is Gloucester Pool Cottage Association and our environmental committee who actually do the water quality volunteer monitoring are really supportive of the township's effort to beef up their water quality monitoring program and to formalize it. We think this is great. We really want to preserve the quality of our lakes as things change in our lakes, as development increases and temperatures go up. We're looking at more water quality problems and we really want to stay on top of that. We think we're doing a decent job of that already, but we're glad to see this effort kind of codify and formalize that. Can I can I advance my slides or how do we do that? Okay. So that's the first point I want to make is we're really happy about this effort. The second point I want to make is that we think we have already identified problems on our lake, on Gloucester Pool, and I'm going to talk about those in a little bit of detail in my presentation. So to start, there are several existing water quality monitoring programs in the township. I'm going to focus on Gloucester Pool because that's where I've done my research and looked everything up. So there's our ongoing volunteer program that's supported by Georgian Bay Township. It goes back almost 20 years. It's really a nice record. I heard the Greenland consultants talk about compromised data. I actually think the data are very good. I think what we lack is is continued synthesis of the data and maybe a little bit more training and a little bit more care in where we sample and when we sample, but I actually think the record is is pretty good and tells us a lot of important things. There are three other important water quality monitoring programs in the in the township. One that I haven't heard many people talk about is the Provincial Water Quality Monitoring Site at Port Severn. So this is a long-running site. There are 20 years of good data on phosphorus and more on other parameters. High-quality monitoring, sophisticated chemistry, this all gets done at MECP Lab at Dorset. And I'll show you some of their data in a second. And then the district supports the Lake Partner Program along with FOCA. And and these two last programs I'll talk about in a little bit more detail, they're much more limited in space and time. Next. So we have two main water quality concerns for Gloucester Pool in particular. One is increasing phosphorus levels or eutrophication. The second one is we have some sites on the pool that have had consistently elevated coliform levels for at least 20 years. We'd like to see those addressed, of course. Next. These are our phosphorus data for Gloucester Pool. So these are the volunteer water quality monitoring data. And the the Y-axis there is the concentration of total phosphorus in the water and the bottom is dates. So that goes from 2005 up till this year or till last year. And the lines that I've drawn for you tell you something about the trophic status of our lakes. So 10 micrograms per liter is kind of the magic number for water quality in Georgian Bay. And below 10 micrograms per liter lakes are clean and blue and pretty. Between 10 and 20, you start to see more algal growth. You see more weeds at your dock. And by the time you get to 20, you're going to start to see perhaps green, green, blue-green algal blooms and so problems. Couple of things I want to point out in these data. In the last couple of years there, on the far right of the graph, there's a lot more points up in the red. One of the things we've done as volunteers since I've been working on this program and and others have been interested in it is we've added more sites and more dates, and I want to thank the township for supporting that. It's been good. But it also shows that when you look a little harder, you find more problems. So one of the things I want to emphasize is how important it is to have multiple sampling sites and dates on all our lakes. Next. These are the phosphorus data from the long-term monitoring site at Port Severn that the province runs. So this is the Provincial Water Quality Monitoring Network. I've drawn a lovely line through the data going all the way back to 2002 or 2003. You can see our phosphorus levels are increasing, so this is this is not good. So we have at least two lines of evidence showing elevated and increasing phosphorus levels in Gloucester Pool. Of course, that's something we'd like to see addressed. Next slide. This is another graph of phosphorus concentration data from another sampling program. So this is the Lake Partner Program that MECP runs with volunteers. All I want to point out here is it's really a sparse dataset. It depends on a volunteer stepping up to doing do this. We have a new volunteer stepped up this year, but for many years it hasn't happened, and so it's pretty sparse data. And the next one, I think, is the last phosphorus data slide. So next. The district also has a water quality monitoring program. It's also fairly sparse data. They only sample three sites on the lake and only once a year. And if you look at their data, all of their numbers are around eight to 10, 12 micrograms per liter because of the sparse sampling. When you look a little harder, you see more higher numbers, unfortunately. One of the things I'd like to learn more about is how phosphorus levels regulate what we do about these problems. I understand the district has some rules that are based on their sampling, and so their numbers are different than our numbers because their their data are fewer. So that's something I'd like to talk about going forward. All right, that's it for phosphorus. Next slide, please. These are the coliform data. So coliform is our poop bacteria. E. coli is the ones that are indicative of human waste. And these are the numbers going back more than 20 years from the volunteer monitoring program. The magic number for Georgian Bay water quality is 10, and you can see lots and lots of our numbers are above that. And they're they're concentrated on specific sites, some of which are not in our township over by Black Lake and and some of which are in Port Severn. So of course, this is something we'd also like to see addressed. So these are two things. We already know we have a problem. Continuing water quality monitoring is really important, but we already know we have some problems that we'd like to work on. All right, I'm going to have some very short comments on our thoughts on how to run the program, the water quality monitoring program, and then I'll stop. So next slide, please. Next. Thanks. Keep going. One more. The township has proposed three options for this water quality monitoring program. We're really supportive of volunteers as the backbone of the program for lots of reasons. It gets everybody involved. It gets cottagers kind of understanding what's up. And we like to win it, so we're happy to keep doing it. But we kind of like option two as opposed to the other options. So option one is a kind of a low-level option at, I think, 25 grand. Option two is at 100. And three, I got them backwards. Okay. Any case. The program was very effective four or five years ago when we had a professor named Pat Chalfrager who did synthesis of the data, and it's really too bad she's not working with us anymore because I thought what she did was really phenomenal. We'd like to see something like that continue. We think that, I think we agree with with Counselor Cooper that hiring staff at the township level may not be the best use of resources. Rather hire an outside contractor who can provide these things for you, who probably provides them for other organizations or other municipalities as well, and has a high level of expertise and a high level of interaction with the existing nonprofits and water quality monitoring programs. So we'd like to kind of see a model that worked like how things worked when Pat Chalfrager was around. We thought that was effective and hopefully the best bang for your buck. Unfortunately, I'm not sure 100K is enough for that. If you add up the cost of the sampling plus the volunteers, the sampling itself and the analysis is not particularly expensive, but contracting with somebody to synthesize the data and write the reports, we're probably underpaying Dr. Chalfrager considering what I would get to do something like that if I was doing it at home. So we could talk about some details of of how you might split what volunteers do versus what your contracted program management does. But there's lots of different ways to do that. We have lots of folks around here who can contribute for free, including me. One of the things we really want to do is get our existing data up on data stream, which is this great online dataset that's free and open to everyone. The provincial data are already there. The district data are already there. So Kaylee's been a big help getting me all the reports and the data, and I'm trying to synthesize that and get that up on on data stream. So we're we're working on that. It's not done, but it's coming. And that's something that I think we can have between contracted experts and volunteers. We can continue to do in the future. The other thing we really like is the Water Quality Advisory Committee that was recommended. Again, it gets people involved. It lets experts come in and and advise and help. There's lots of us around. Might be, might be, you only need one committee instead of an expert and a stakeholder committee. You can combine them. It's always hard to have multiple committees. So, next slide. And I'm going to stop after this slide. This is going to be my last one. In addition to thinking about how we do the water quality monitoring, we really want to see the township move forward on remediation with our perceived phosphorus problem. And so Greenland also suggested this, but I I think it's time to move forward with some kind of source identification study. And so Greenland also suggested this, but I think it's time to move forward with some kind of source identification study for phosphorus. It's most likely that our source is septic, but we can do some more work to to really sort that out and figure it out. And so we'd like to see some kind of support or additional funding to do a source identification study for phosphorus so we can figure out where our problems are and start to address them as soon as possible. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Council, any questions for Dr. Gilmore?
Now for his. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Obviously, a lot of work went into gathering the data and presenting it. One of the things that was in the Dillon report was the idea of a continued need for, what I'll call non- probably non-volunteer sampling of things such as dissolved oxygen and other things. And I got excited because I went out and bought a Secchi disc so I could do one more thing than we were currently doing. But that's trivial compared to dissolved oxygen and some of the other things. Do you, do you think that we could supplement the volunteer game with some experts who would do those few things? And what I wanted to be really clear about is you highlighted excellently that there are other programs, but they're sporadic. And so we're not really getting a continuous dataset from which we can make decisions. And I think those data points become very critical for being able to make decisions. So it looks, it sounds to me like we need to not only have the volunteers do the more simple-ish volunteer things, but other, have you thought that part through? Figured you had it?
Red is on. Okay. Yes. And I'm going to speak mostly for inland lakes rather than Georgian Bay itself. One of the things that Pat Chalfraser's crew did was a dissolved oxygen profile in the fall. So some of our lakes stratify, meaning they're cold, and sometimes they lose oxygen in the bottom. And one of the things that happens when that occurs is you release phosphorus from the bottom of the lake. And so because we've been loading our lakes with phosphorus for so many years, that's a way that more phosphorus can get introduced and it can enhance eutrophication. So she went out to the deep spot in each lake with a sophisticated son and measured oxygen profiles and also measured phosphorus at depth. So that would be hard for volunteers to do. So yeah, that'd be a great thing if you had an outside contractor who was managing the program and that was, say, a university person like Pat Chalfraser and she had a crew to do that. That's the perfect example of something they could add to the volunteer program. So having students involved in this has been great. They were great to work with. Training people to do this is great. So I would certainly love to see a program that was able to keep doing that.
Thank you for that. Do you think that doing some of that kind of testing is possible with volunteers if we provided some training? Or is it beyond a volunteer trainer?
You know, it's equipment maintenance. That's the issue, right? Some of those, some of those dissolved oxygen probe, that you're going to drop to the bottom of the lake needs some care and some expertise to use. So I would maybe, but I would say no. I'd say you'd be better off with the pros than the minis.
Good. Thanks.
Council Jervis?
Yeah, and thank you for the important, I too lament that Pat Chalfraser has moved on to other things. I'm curious, and just curious for your opinion, the Dillon report includes this satellite imagery aspect to things. Obviously, new technology is always coming along and satellite technology particularly is becoming very, very, very sophisticated. Do you see that satellite imagery aspect to water quality being something that we should be looking into? What's your opinion on that?
That's a little outside my area of expertise. What I, what I see from my colleagues, so I work on Chesapeake Bay at home. What I see from my colleagues who do this at home is that it's good for big bodies of water. And maybe we're not quite there yet for small bodies. But the technology may be more advanced than I realize. And actually, I was going to ask the consultant that if he thought that satellite data was something we could use for our inland lakes as well as Georgian Bay. I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you. Councila Gratiano?
Thank you. No questions. Really just a, I wish to extend a thank you, Dr. Gilmore, for your data and your presentation today. I think it's been brilliant. It answers many questions specifically on the preferred structure. And I also echo Dr. Pat Chalfraser's presentation data was incredibly eye-opening as well as it was really delivered in such a way that a layman could understand it as well, which I think was brilliant on her part as well. I also want to extend a thank you to the GPCA for coordinating today's delegation, specifically Environmental Committee. It's great to see that there's such an active interest in maintaining our water quality and that we have some really well-positioned scientists in our community that we can leverage collectively to make our lakes that much better. So, you know, hopefully council has heard this today that we do have subject matter, excuse me, subject matter expertise within our communities that we can leverage. And I look forward to hopefully working with you continuously and going forward with our water quality programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bochek?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, thanks very much for coming and doing this presentation. It's a learning curve for quite a few of us up here that are not experts. In part of your presentation here, you said it's not just about the testing, but it's the mediation is something that is also important. And you mentioned that there's a high level of phosphorus on the bottom of the lake that is becoming part of the water body. My knowledge or my understanding about phosphorus is that it's mostly man-made or human-made from things like dish soap and everything else. I'm just wondering, like, we have a program here at the township where we subsidize a thing called a Food Saber, okay? Which is a way of mediating organic waste. I'm wondering if there's anything in the way of a phosphorus collection type of unit that could be put onto cottage septic systems or whatever that maybe the township could look at a subsidization program to try and help mediation.
I'll take that through Chair Cotia. Yes, there are aftermarket items you can get to do that. They are not cheap. I know when we have planning applications for reduced setbacks, we do require these things. I did some inquiries earlier on the same thought of possible funding and possible, you know, guidance and help to get reduced fees for those, and they could cost anywhere between five and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, that answers a lot right there.
Yeah, let me jump in on that one, too. In Chesapeake Bay, our limiting nutrient is nitrogen, not phosphorus. So things work a little differently in our estuarine water, salty water. So we have to limit nitrogen coming out of our septic systems. And so we also put on fancy new septic systems that cost, now they're almost twenty grand US. But one of the things the Chesapeake Bay program has done, and that's a combination of federal and state money, is support those by paying for some of them or at least putting some money into them. And so that's, that's a way that we've been trying to reduce our nitrogen input from septic, but it ain't free.
Council Predko?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, and thank you, Doctor, for coming in today. It's a great presentation and I appreciate you were watching your watch while you went away through. So time is of the essence. The one thing I'm, you know, curious about is this, the data stream and the sort of the central repository for data. Do you think that, and you're in a very interesting corner of our township where you're part of, you're on the edge of Severn Sound and you're still part of Muskoka and you've got the township helping with the water testing as well. If, do you think there's a broader opportunity to take something like what the Dillon Consulting Group has put together as a model and help sell it to Severn Sound or Muskoka or the archipelago and try to get a broader buy-in? So that if we're looking at how do we share the cost of the analysis and reporting? It's not just on our municipality, but do you, do you see an opportunity there? And is that something from your experience in Chesapeake Bay that people could try to do that kind of cost sharing?
The program that was proposed by Greenland, although it's specific to our township, is pretty much what any good water quality monitoring program does. The specifics of how to do it are useful, but the basics of it are what everybody does. It would be great to get more buy-in from Severn Township on this, on Gloucester Pool, for sure. The data stream platform is great and it's free. And that is something that volunteers can manage, even volunteers without a ton of expert expertise. So getting, getting the data online should be fairly easy for every township. Interpreting the data and writing the reports like Dr. Chalfraser did is a separate issue.
Yeah, I miss Doctor.
Council Hazlewood?
It was on. Oh, no. Just, I wanted to, oh, no. So I just wanted to offer a piece of data and this kind of bridges to the question I made about doing dissolved oxygen and other things. So what we learned from Dr. Carl Schaefer and Dr. Pat Chalfraser is that when you get into a dissolved oxygen and no oxygen in the lower waters, you end up getting anaerobic bacteria digesting the sediments at the bottom and releasing phosphorus into the water body. And you're getting a spike in phosphorus, not from the human side, but from the natural vegetation that is on the bottom and decomposing. And so, yes, the human source is a problem and we certainly want to address that. But the fact that we, our waters, and certainly in North Bay, South Bay, go anoxic about mid-August, means that it is now generating phosphorus back into the water column. And so for us to understand perhaps how to deal with the, the lack of oxygen in the waters is another issue that we should consider. You know, there are strategies like bubblers and other things that people have come up with to force air and oxygen back into the water column to help reduce that anoxic state. But do you have any of that activity going on down there? Yes?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Good.
Briefly, so the phosphorus that's accumulated on the bottom of our lakes is probably mainly human. It's just collected there over many years and it stays. We're going to see more and more problems with anoxic bottom waters as temperatures rise. But the best way to limit anoxic bottom waters is actually to limit phosphorus coming into the system because it's a whole big feedback loop. So what happens is phosphorus comes in, you get algal growth, you get more weeds, you get algal blooms. And then that stuff drops into the bottom of your lake and rots down there in the bottom of your lake. And when it's anaerobic, it just stays there and accumulates on the bottom. And then it gets released when the oxygen goes to zero. So the oxygen going to zero is also driven by the algae in the lake. So the more algal and plant growth you have in the lake, the more bacteria are rotting that stuff and they use up oxygen to do that. So the best way to limit bottom water anoxia is to limit phosphorus coming into the lake. New phosphorus coming in. Reduce algal growth by reducing nutrients.
So perhaps our target shouldn't be ten, it should be five.
We'll be lucky to get to ten, Al.
I know, I know.
Ten would be great. You're never going to get rid of anoxia, but you can limit it. You can limit its duration and its spatial extent.
Thank you, worship. And I believe councillor Cooper has yet to have an opportunity to speak, so perhaps I'll. All right, fair. Fair, thank you. I have a question with regards to Dr. Gilmore. You mentioned perhaps a hundred thousand dollars may not be enough. And I'm curious, and perhaps you haven't crunched the numbers, but what do you feel could be appropriate to address these issues? Based on maybe if you convert USD to Canadian very quickly, what you're receiving. And then secondly to that, with regards to on what I'm going to define as on-prem lab versus outsourced lab, do you feel that there's any benefit to having our own? Because you'd mentioned that some of the testing equipment requires attention and professional care. Do we endeavor to create? Or would it be beneficial for our municipality in partnership with perhaps other municipalities to create a lab locally and allow us the free-flow bandwidth to process our, our samples quicker than perhaps shipping them off to a doorstep or wherever? And then having to wait in a line for, for them to be able to provide attention to it. So, so two questions. Cost, what do you think would be ideal based on your experiences? And two, either creating a lab here or maintaining status quo and shipping off to other facilities over here. Thank you.
I'll take, I'll take the second one first. So while it would be phenomenal to have a local facility where people could work, perhaps university partners or nonprofit partners could come in and have a lab space to work in. Running a lab, especially if you're going to do chemical analysis like total phosphorus, is very expensive. My budget for my lab, when I had, let's say I had five technicians and myself and a post-doc, my budget would easily be approaching two million dollars a year. And that's, so that's, right, so that's, and that's, that's mostly the cost of covering my staff. That's also the cost of maintaining equipment. So I spend upwards of a hundred thousand dollars a year just to maintain my equipment.
Question.
So I would say township lab is probably more than you want it to.
Thank you so much.
On cost, I'll come back to what I just said about the cost of running a lab and the cost of personnel. So let's say I hired a post-doc, I might pay that person seventy or eighty K. And with overhead on that, it's going to be double that. So having a full-time doctoral-level staff at the very lowest level, somebody who's just gotten their degree, is probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty K a year US for full-time for that person. So that's why I'm saying it's probably not feasible to do that at the township level. It might be feasible to have somebody like Kaylee, not Kaylee, just, I know. Who would, who would be the go-to person so that, you know, when I have a problem with, you know, where's my, where's my stuff? I can come to that person and get my coliform plates. But yeah, that might be the limit of what you want somebody at the township to do because scientists are expensive. Everybody's expensive. Anybody you hire is expensive, you know.
Thank you, and appreciate the understanding of what the cost would be if we were to structure it in such a way that a volunteer system with one program manager as defined based on, I believe, today's presentation along with your recommendation. Would that cut the cost substantially? Meaning if we were to have a lab, perhaps cover the cost of the maintenance of the equipment, but then have a volunteer program where perhaps someone such as yourself or others within the community came together collectively under one program manager and we effectively are only paying the program manager and have a series of volunteers, would that drastically decrease the cost in your opinion?
My, I'm basing what I'm saying on how things work when Pat Chalfraser was doing things and also my own experience. I think if you had, if you paid a high-level experienced PhD person or somebody at a nonprofit who has a lot of experience doing this part-time, two, three months a year, plus some underlying staff who would be around during sampling season, so six months, halftime or a third time to kind of manage the program, you might be able to get away with that.
Council Cooper?
Thank you for your presentation. It was really very enlightening and excellent. And it's really helpful also to help us understand at least what we had in the past with Dr. Pat Chalfraser. Because I used to say, I bet we're getting two or three hundred thousand dollars worth of work because we didn't pay for any of the people that were PhDs and so on, the doing all the testing and Dr. Chalfraser and the little lab that she used. And now I know it's two million, probably, not two hundred thousand. But anyway, which we should be thankful for what happened, but unfortunately, we're not in that position at the moment. So I think it's important to point that out. Another thing that I've heard from some of the scientists on Georgian Bay side, the coastal side, is that one of the phenomenons, and I'd like you to comment on this if you think that- is that one of the phenomenons, and I'd like you to comment us if you think this is possible, but I've heard from others that because we went through a very unusual period from 2000 to 2013 on coastal Georgian Bay, where we had a long, long, almost a 15-year run of low water, which is, if you look at history of water levels in Georgian Bay, that never happened before. And then we had a five-year turnaround where the water went to the highest level. And and I look at places now on coastal Georgian Bay where there's all sorts of algae growth along the shoreline and was never there pre-2000. And one of the things I'm hearing from some of the scientists is that, and I wanted you to comment on this, is that high levels of phosphorus can also be caused by vegetation. And there was a huge amount of vegetation that grew for almost 15 years along the shoreline of Georgian Bay that had never been there before. And when the water came back up, it was all killed. Most of it was killed. It went into the water and down down below. Is that a possibility? That's what I've heard anyway from other scientists, that phosphorus levels may be elevated by natural circumstances like that one.
There there are certainly ways that, you know, getting more vegetation into lakes could add phosphorus to lakes. But I think the more important point is you're highlighting these these changes that we've never seen before, changes in water levels, changes in temperature, changes in ice free season. And all these things are going to keep going. And that's why it's so critical to do this higher-level water quality monitoring program. So we can address these issues as they come and be ready to deal with them and not get blindsided. We can be watching, knowing that more change is going to come.
Well, thank you for that. And I realize that weather changes, yes. So I get that. I just think we went through an unusual circumstance and and maybe that had some impact. But it sounded somewhat sensible. Anyway, that's that's all I have to offer. Thank you.
I want to I want to just thank you again for allowing me to pontificate and and take some of your time. So thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Well, thank you. We greatly appreciate your sharing your expertise with us. Did you have something to add, Councillor Bocek?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Going back to back to mediation, because that seems to be very important to me. Gloucester Pool is within my ward, both at District of Muskoka and the Township of Georgian Bay. And I'm wondering in this funding, because that's what we're here talking about as far as I'm concerned, is the amount of funding. Would the funding include education? Because I believe it's so important to get the message out, phosph-free soaps, don't use fertilizers, you know, naturalized shorelines. A lot of people don't know how they can contribute. And, you know, like was said earlier, in Gloucester Pool, I'm not sure the percentage of the cottages are in Severn Sound, but I think it's the whole one-whore shoreline is Severn's Severn Sound. So I'm not sure that our township couldn't engage in conversations with the other township and see if we can get collaboration on this. But I think education is key, and I don't know how much of the funding would go to education, but I think it's a key component.
I strongly agree with you, and I had skipped a few of my last slides. But that was one of the things that I had in there was was education. And I don't know how you how you would want to do that. You know, if you hired, if you hired a consultant or you hired a university, they might be able to help you with that. Or you might want to allocate resources for somebody at the township to do more education. Either way, it's it's your easiest path to reducing phosphorus is to get people voluntarily to do those kinds of things rather than trying to start forcing new rules about development or changes in septic systems, which may have to happen. But let's take those voluntary approaches as best we can first and try to push those. You said something. Oh, I wanted to come back to figuring out where our phosphorus comes from. That's one of the reasons I'm not sure 100K is going to be enough to do what we want to do, because you might want to pay somebody, an expert, to come in and tell you, evaluate the data, maybe collect some more data and figure out where your phosphorus is coming from so you can properly address that problem. And that's going to cost money too.
That's excellent. And I really appreciate you coming in and speaking to us because it's educated people like me who are not educated in this. But I I agree with you 100% that education is going to be a key component of this. So thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Nicholson. Your turn.
Through the chair, I'm gonna, that was so great. I don't think I have to say much because I know you've all read the report. So we're just going to go right to the to the heart of it, to the resolution. So before you, you've been given three options. Those are listed at the top in the recommendations. The actual cost that's associated with each was listed further down below. But just to make it easy, I can break it down. So the first option is to approve the water quality monitoring program as per the guide to be implemented in 2026. I think we set aside amount, I'll aside for that for 250,000. Option two, which was to form a water quality stakeholder and water quality science advisory committee to establish a water quality monitoring program using portions of the guide to be implemented for 2026. That amount is set aside of $100,000, which is currently already in our current base budget for this year. So there would be no increase to the tax base. Option number three would be to continue the water quality monitoring program in its current state for 2026. Approve a water quality stakeholder and water quality science advisory committee to establish an updated program to be implemented in 2027. And the amount we have set aside for that is $25,000.
Thank you. Councillor Graziano, please.
Thank you. Kaylee, based on the amounts you've articulated, I'm assuming option one is a gold standard, essentially is what what I'm hearing.
That that is a cost associated based on the guide that was provided.
Okay, it's 250,000 for the four-year term. Is that correct or how long?
Per year.
Per year. Okay. Well, that's precious. I I ran on a policy that I would not seek change taxes and be as fiscally responsible as I possibly could with taxpayer money. Based on my understanding of what my constituents want, there's absolutely no compromise in water quality. I've heard time and time again that the economy is the the environment and the environment is the economy is some have used before. I would go so far as to say option one for me, and that's what I'll be voting for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Predko.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. Kaylee, thank you for the options. Well, they're not your options, but for our options. And and obviously, there there's issues with with all of the options we can take, which is why we're here. But I'm wondering if there's an option for, based on some of the conversation we've had today about the investigation of the phosphorus and and the source of the phosphorus, is there an option where we could look at something similar to option, between option two and option three, establishing the the committee, but maintaining the volunteer program, but adding money in for analysis of our data for for phosphorus? And is there an appetite, I guess, around council for an approach like that?
So through the through the chair, each of those programs did include the volunteers. Included it. A lot of the cost was full-time positions or not. You can change these options as much as you want. You just have to know there is going to be increased cost. Unfortunately, I do not know what that cost would be for what you're asking.
And then do we have a sense of whether something like SSEA could do that analysis of our data for phosphorus for us?
I would imagine so, but that would have to be a conversation that we could have with them.
Okay, so I guess on that front, I'm satisfied with the options we have in front of us. But I do think we need to have consideration for how to analyze the phosphorus. I appreciate the the graphs and the alarming trends that we're seeing. So I'm not sure if the the chair wants to alter any of our options here, but or maybe add another item to the resolution to investigate the cost of.
I'm going to let everybody speak once and then we'll start trying to narrow it down.
Okay.
Because we're probably going to spend anywhere from zero to $1 million over the next 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Councillor Bocek, please.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Looking at the options, my preferred option would be option number one because we're going to get the most out of option number one. There's a question of accountability for that money, which can be dealt with at some point in time. But in simple terms, what are we getting for our dollars? And that's what I mean by accountability. And we're looking at a four-year program here. And I'm just wondering if this is done on a year-by-year basis. And we only have a year left in this term of council, which is concerning to me. Because if we're going to embark on a program like this, it's going to need the full scope of the program, not just one year of it. So one of my concerns is that when this term of council is over, that this continues forward. So I'm wondering if this needs to be a four-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement. And anything you can offer on that?
If I may, through through the chair, whether you pass that now or not, somebody can come in and change it. Like, and per the way budgeting is done, we are budgeting, obviously, on a yearly basis. That's why the the amount set up is to kind of be incorporated into this year's budget.
I've got nothing further. Thank you.
Councillor Jervis.
Truthfully, say that money wasn't an object, then I'd be all keen on option one, though I think that having in in-house staff here maybe is not not such a great idea. And I really would like us to investigate how we can tie in what we need as has been profiled to us by Dylan and by Dr. Gilmore with what we already have in place, our arrangements with Muskoka Watershed, with the SSEA, not to mention what might already be going on with other townships. And I'm thinking of the Archipelago particularly because their waters are our waters in so many different ways. So in that way, I'm looking at option two. And again, it's it's been, I'm concerned about the effect on our taxpayers. But more importantly, in the long run, if we, unless we do something, we we won't have any taxpayer payers because people move out because the water quality would be so poor. And that's that's the biggest issue right there. This our huge concern for the water, which is part of the environment. So I'd love to look at option two and figure out how we can consider or bring in other entities like SSEA, Muskoka Watershed, et cetera, to help with the cost or and benefit as well.
If I may, through the chair, and this is where you kind of get into the different options. But the working group or committee of council, that would be where them implemented, deciding what they want and how much they want to spend would be a good way to move forward. But that would again put you probably in options free because it's by the time you form form the committee, you have the money and then you move forward, probably wouldn't be ready till 2027 unless you ran something similar to what was last year.
Just to follow up, then, I mean, what is then of concern is we want to be able to maintain the data collection because we don't want to lose, we don't have a gap in in our data collection, right?
It would be the same as it has been.
Okay. And then and finally, has anybody talked to Pat Chow Fraser? Can we hire her?
Retired.
Was retired.
CEO Mariotti.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kutsia. I hear that phosphorus is obviously an important factor. And just want to bring it forward to council or rhetoric council that the SSA SSEA is an expert in phosphorus analysis and removal, et cetera, et cetera. And they've done that for the for the southern part of of the of the watershed and successfully delisted. This is something that maybe we we haven't leveraged the SSEA up until now. But it could be a potential option to explore is what can the SSEA offer for this program now that we have, you know, that we have before council? Is there an opening for the SSEA possibly to maybe act as an administrator for for the program? Because, you know, Kaylee, at the end of the day, she's she's a CBO. And she she's worked hard trying to administer the program with with volunteers. The volunteers are a key backbone for for this program. We're not in the water business. Council has heard how much lab equipment costs. And so, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there for for council's consideration. Maybe we can we can leverage some something, you know, that what the SSEA has to offer.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Got my two cents worth in now. I'd just like to pick up on the commentary about SSEA. Could do something, because I understand that they don't even have a boat. So pretty tough to do water testing. Yeah, occasionally they get a ride in a boat and we get one test a year in many locations. So I just would remind us of that. And also that I would remind us that we have put in a direction to SSEA to terminate our contract, which is 100,000 about a year. So that's another issue that needs to be, remind ourselves when we're looking at dollars and cents in our ratepayers and what they're going to pay out. So I remind us of that. I guess in terms of looking at options here, I would be inclined to opt for option two and carry on, but expand the the training. And I think we could do that if we had a budget of 100,000. And I'm hoping that in due course, we'll have another 100,000 to spend because we're not spending it on SSEA. So that'd be my thoughts. And I think having, you know, staff on board and lab equipment and new equipment and so forth, I think it's unrealistic when when our program, we can access other labs relatively easily. So that's, those are my thoughts. Option two. Thank you.
Councillor Hazleton. Lots of great ideas here, lots of money to be spent. That's another thing. I I want to bridge from what we heard Dr. Gilmore say, which was hiring a consultant would probably be a very effective way of getting access to the expertise, probably way better than a staff kind of role. And as we just heard from our CEO, we're not in the water quality business. So my my recommendation is let's let's leverage that kind of expertise and that kind of path. I think that I think the one thing that we haven't done, and maybe we should do it. I had a lecture from Councillor Cooper this morning on recruiting. And I thought, wait a minute, we haven't done as a council a very good job of recruiting Dr. Chow Fraser replacements. And yet there are experts that we have been exposed to through the Muskoka Watershed Council and others, where experts from universities have come to the communities and presented. And maybe they have an interest in picking up where Dr. Chow Fraser left off. So I think that there is there is a need for and an opportunity for recruiting to be able to get to a better place without breaking the bank. You know, to Councillor Graziano's comment about, you know, spending the 250. I don't have a problem with allocating 250. I think that option two with a 250 number and leveraging the water quality stakeholder and science advisory group would be the best way of bringing community expertise, which we keep talking about. Let's let's leverage the experts in our community. So let's do it. Let's get that group of people together and allocate enough budget to allow them to be effective so that we can move forward aggressively into a new program.
Thank you. I I think it's all been very interesting. And Councillor Hazleton, I'm afraid you took one of the points I wanted to raise. If Dr. Chow Fraser has retired, she may have been replaced by somebody who may be interested in that program. Or there may be other programs. I don't know, but I think that's well worth pursuing. I was a little bit confused, Ms. Nicholson, by one of your comments, like the difference between two and three, when you said, well, it's going to take us a year to put this all together. But then, item two is, we're putting it together right away. So I found that a little confusing. But to me, I've ruled out option three automatically. And I'm landing between one and two. And the reason I say that is let's keep moving forward. Let's spend what we have to spend. I think, and I'm sure our treasurer will jump up and down and tell me he has no idea what I'm talking about. But I happen to think that about 100 grand is 1% on our tax base. So given that, and given that number two is already in our graph budget, because based on continuing what we did last year. And I don't know if we had 100,000 in our 25 budget and we haven't spent it all. To me, oh, it's gone? Oh, because Ms. Nicholson went wild with her consultants, right? Okay, got it. But that's great because I think we have a momentum going here, is my comment. Is that we have reached out to numerous experts who have taken us each a step further. And we received quite an extensive report here with suggestions and advice as to what to do. I, I think it's very important to continue encouraging volunteers to do the sampling that they can across all our lakes. Because as Dr. Gilmore mentioned early on in her comments was that that's one form of education. Because I know from my experience going to various cottage groups around the township with their annual meetings and that, most of them have an either a water quality and/or environmental position, if I can call it that, who are so happy to report that what they've learned. And again, a form of education. So I think, I don't want to see us delegate this to a professional firm to come on in, do what they do, and all of us simply get a report. I think that's a mistake. I think we need to encourage the volunteers. I think we need to keep moving this forward. I think getting a committee or two together that includes expertise in our township. You know, maybe we could convince Dr. Gilmore to be a member of that committee. I think she certainly should be asked. And she's hiding behind a chair from my angle, and that's fine. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But imagine having individuals with her qualification. You know, maybe Dr. Chow Fraser is bored in her retirement and wants to join this committee to carry on some of her. Okay, I'll get sillier as we go on, so I'll change the direction here. But I think trying to create a committee is extremely important. I think that, to me, I see option two as being the minimum. And I think that if, having said that, I don't want to say, let's go to option one, which to me implies a little too much hiring somebody else to do the work for us. That, I'm not as keen on that. But I don't want to be handcuffed by option two saying, well, we're just going to spend 100,000 and no more if other opportunity comes along. So I guess I'm saying I want 1.5 is the best option. Anyway, I've got lots of hands. We're going to start a second round and then we'll take a vote. Counsel Graziano.
Thank you, and through your worship, and thank you to Counselor Hazleton and yourself. I would agree, 1.5, I think, based on emerging of the two is ideal in our scenario. I would like to, I would like to strongly consider what was presented here today with regards to hiring of a program manager, whether that's an in-house staff member, which I would likely prefer or bias towards a non-staff member, third party to do. I think we should be considering allocating some budget for that resource. And again, per Dr. Gilmore, whether it's a full-time resource that's doing analysis and synthesis during the winter months, as well as during the summer months, and coordinating everybody and all the inbound sampling and so on. I think we absolutely need that additional fund there. So 1.5, where we take the 250,000 that has been recommended, and we deploy it in such a way that we can have a program manager, but then base it on volunteers and committees, I think is brilliant. I will request a recorded vote. So if the clerk can, you know, record the vote and the amounts that each counselor seeks to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jervis, please.
Yeah, go back to comments I made, going right back to first term of council with regards to data that we've received from the SSEA, from Watershed, from other people that have done testing. We have for many years been receiving data and looking at it. But we've never been able to achieve a level where we can determine that there is a source for some of the bigger numbers that are critical and try and get rid of, and try and mitigate what's causing the buildup of whatever it is that's causing us concern. That was my frustration initially with the SSEA. I now understand that science is science and it provides the numbers. It can't always provide you with why the numbers are where they are. And that's part of my frustration, but I think that's everybody's frustration. I would love to see us come out of this in the end with a roadmap on what we do with the numbers. It's one thing to have them, but it's another to use them for a purpose that ultimately achieves what we want, which is better water, which is part of our environmental policy. So I really want to see that as part of the program going down the road. I see that with the report from Dylan, that they seem to be able, they think that we can move ahead on that. And I'd really like to see that. We've spent a lot of money as members of the SSEA over the years. Again, another frustration on my part, but perhaps misguided to a certain extent. I think that if the SSEA was part of this program, then that would help, one, make, help people understand why we've been spending the money on the SSEA. And two, that's, you know, using the expertise that's already in place. And they have background that is very valuable already in place since they've been around for a while. So I like the idea of harnessing the resource that is the SSEA. But I want it harnessed in a way that we can achieve some results that are better for our water quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bocheck, please.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, an integrated water system is quite key. I think we all know that. And the 250,000 is a little bit hard to swallow. But my question to our building department, to Kaylee, is have we looked at or engaged with any sort of federal or provincial funding to help us achieve our goal of 250,000? We constantly hear that from our sustainability officer, that she does procure funds federally and provincially. And I'd like an answer to that before I make my final decision. If we can't get funding federally or provincially, or we don't at least try to do it, then I would also probably move towards the 1.5 instead of the 250. But perhaps both, or one of you could answer my question. Thank you.
So through the chair, to Counsel Bocheck, that's not something we've actually looked at. I know it's been discussed, but I'm not sure if Ms. Snire has any comments to add to that about the likelihood of obtaining any type of water quality funding from the government.
I would say it's pretty limited. The only thing that would come across would be summer student funding to help with the collection.
The volunteers. Doesn't sound like it.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
The only funding that is immediately possible, it would be funding a student to assist with the program. Other than that, I think, it hasn't been explored. So I think we have to make a decision today based on, I'll call it, taxpayer funding.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Cooper, please.
Just to help expedite this, I'm going to suggest that we take a vote on option two, but use the verbiage up to 250,000 as opposed to it being 250,000. I know we'd have to set the money aside, but I think in the first year, we're going to want to have the opportunity to put together a gold-plated program, but may not be able to do it initially. I think we will have to recruit a program manager. I think most of us have said that we should go outside for a program manager. And this would allow us to go in that direction. But I think to get on with this decision, I'm going to recommend that we say up to and with the program, recruiting a program manager. And they will help us put together what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Predkum.
You shouldn't have said that. So just, I would be supportive of the 1.5. I, you know, we need to get this established and up and running and successful. I'm, at this moment, I'm not convinced that two full-time people would be required in-house to, and I would, if that's what the $250,000 represents, I mean, the 1.5 is fine. But I'm worried about the implications of two FTEs onto the payroll. And we don't really understand the workload that would be associated with this long-term. So I think a gradual ramp up is what I would appreciate or I would support. And again, you know, looking at how we can try to leverage our neighbors to participate or to help offset costs in the long run would be a vital portion for this committee to try to tackle as well. Thanks.
Counsel Hazleton. I'm recognizing in spite of lack of hand, just because I've gone to five other counselors.
Okay, you know, when I said 1.5, I wasn't talking actually about dollars or cents. I was just saying somewhere in between the two. But, you know, because 1.5 would be 175,000 if you were doing your math. But no, I think there's a couple of things that are, to me, important in discussion. And I think we're going to end up, oh. The treasurer wants to shut down my dollars. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Kutsia, to members of council. I just wanted to throw out an option in terms of the way the budget will be presented. So the $100,000 is existing within the base budget with no additional increase or tax levy. We are coming forward with other service enhancements for council's consideration. And any additional funds can be put in as a service enhancement so that council can weigh all of the service enhancements and determine what is a priority. Because right now, we're making a decision blindly and not knowing what the tax levy potential could be. So if there is a dollar value that council would like included as a service enhancement to further consider with all other options, I'd be happy to include that.
Yeah, because in fairness, we are doing something here at the committee of the whole, that then goes back to council. And meanwhile, we're also be looking at a budget as a whole, so how it all slots in. So whatever we decide today is not final. But the comments I wanted to make was, I can imagine us down the road having an employee that's responsible for managing the program. That may not be doctor employee, but an employee, in other words, to let Ms. Nicholson get back to her day job. That I can easily see, having one employee in the budget in the future. I think one of the other comments that we've talked about is what's more important than anything else is that this all leads to mitigation of one form or another. That we identify through all this testing that we believe X and Y are our problems. And we pursue how to reduce it. For instance, I was so pleased to hear Ms. Nicholson report to us, I think a year ago, but I don't remember the time. But how some of their septic inspections were concentrated on where the scores, the water scores were the least favorable. Now, I don't think she found much problems in those areas, maybe, but not. In other words, her chase didn't fix the problem, but it started looking at what could possibly be the causes. And I think things like that are exceptionally important. I'm going to suggest that we do a motion, item two. Counsel Cooper said up to 250,000. I don't care what dollar amount we put into in the sense of, this is not final. This will go to council. This will go through the budget process. My gut was going to say 200, but I'm not sure how much it really matters. Counsel Cooper, how about we just go to 200? Okay. All right, good, because you are the second on this. Counsel Hazleton, does that work for you? Because you are the mover. Okay. All right, if it only was that simple every time. So I have moved by Counselor Hazleton, seconded by Counselor Cooper. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole received the report regarding water quality monitoring for consideration and recommends to council that they choose the option two, which is form a water quality stakeholder and water quality science advisory committees to establish a water quality monitoring program using portions of the guide to be implemented in 2026 with a budget of up to $200,000. Counselor Hazleton?
Question. So we have understood that there is a difference between a working group and a committee. Do we want it to be a committee? Do we want it to be a working group?
You know, I think with this committee of the whole, we want it to be a group of people. And whether we call it a committee or a working group in the end, does matter once we finalize.
Speak to the clerk.
So if the resolution specifically states committee, then we're stuck with it. I'm wondering, a working group is a little more flexible.
Okay, committee or working group. Okay, with that amendment, all those in favor? And that has carried, oh, sorry, this is supposed to be a recorded vote, but it was unanimous. So it doesn't matter? I apologize. But it was an unanimous vote, so we can record that. I apologize.
If it's unanimous, it's fine.
Can you record that it was unanimous?
It doesn't.
Okay. With that, did I spell that properly? Who knows? For the record, that was unanimous. All right, thank you very, thank you very much for the guests, but especially Dr. Gilmore. Always love hearing from expertise. All right. On our, on our committee of the whole, there is a second item. And that was waste management discussion verbal. Counselor Cooper, I believe you had this added to the agenda.
Are we going to break for lunch and then have that discussion? Or?
Oh, we're going to continue and then break for lunch because we have a 2 o'clock hard line for the, what do you, what do you call it? Special counsel.
Okay. So I did send out a note to people on council about this. And I just really was trying to remind us that we have a pretty thorny issue. And I don't believe we've, you know, individually as individually as counselors, we may talk to people about it, but I think as a group or council and staff, we need to maybe figure out a communication strategy to deal with the solid waste issue, because there's just a lot of talk out there, but no sort of firm position. And I'm not sure that we have a firm position, but maybe status, what the status is at the moment and maybe what the goal is, is sort of where I was headed with this. You know, there are other things out there that I, for instance, saw at my marina, which says bins don't belong here. Some people were bloody insulted by that statement, understandably so. And so I think we need to remind ourselves that our constituents, many of the number that I have explained the facts of life to, really thought that we initiated all this. We didn't. And that hasn't been clarified. So there are a couple of questions.
I, before I go to Counselor Rautsev, I'll make one comment. I have explained for years to everybody I talked to, including all sorts of AGMs, et cetera, et cetera, solid waste is a district responsibility. They're responsible for those signs that has their name on it. We, as a township, are stepping up to try to improve the changes that are going through because we know how important this to our residents, but.
Could I just comment about that? Because I, you know, this is sort of an open discussion. It is a district response. If you look at the municipal act around this subject, it's the district's responsibility to take care of providing disposal diversion, but actually, the lower tier can look after collection. That is right in this, if you go and take a look.
And we have actually started to do that in a few cases, like the large item pickups.
Right. So that's one thing we did, but we have the right to do the entire thing if we so choose. They just have to provide diversion. Have we discovered in some of the cases, the solutions that we're coming up with, our diversion's not even going to be in the District of Muskoka. It's going to be elsewhere, Simcoe County, or you name it. So there's another fact that we need to get out there in front of people so that they understand we're running taxes over there, but not getting services. So I think, and if, and if we, the people that are on coastal Georgia Bay, many of whom will be going through their marinas and paying their marinas extra money for a service, what does that mean? What is the district going to do about that? How are they going to show us what, what sort of credit there's going to be for those individuals because they're providing essentially their own collection?
And that issue has absolutely been brought up with district, and we're going to be talking district budget in the near future to district counselors. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I'm saying that a lot of that is in the works. I'm not, you know, I'm not, we, I'm not sure what we can communicate as a township on that, other than saying we're working on it, because unfortunately, we're not at the final resolution yet.
Maybe some of the things that I've just stated, though, such as this is what we could potentially do or not because of what the municipal act says. So there are some things that we could communicate. We don't have any final answers, but it doesn't mean that here are some of the considerations that we're looking at. So that's what I'm suggesting, that as a council, we need to maybe work on a statement that covers this off, because it's the end of the season for many seasonal residents, and I understand, you know, the curbside's going to be lovely for all the people that have curbside, but that, close to 40% of our ratepayers are going to have no service from the district. So that's what it amounts to.
Counselor Graziano.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this past weekend, I had some recycling that I needed to take to the dump on, on South Gibson Lake Road, and within that recycling had some metal pieces. I was greeted by the attendant there, who is now physically greeting every person that uses that facility and collecting their garbage to ensure that there is no hazard waste in there. And two issues arose. One, there's no clearly demarcated parking spaces in that vicinity. And so we got people now parking on the south side, or rather, the north side of South Gibson Lake Road. Those are the ones traveling towards the 400. And we have people, because of southbound traffic coming from other lakes, such as Go Home or surrounding, parking on the south side of the road, causing a bottleneck for east-west traffic. Okay? And the district has yet to, I guess, create spaces. Now, there is enough of a shoulder if people use the shoulder. However, a lot of people just pull up on the pavement and almost near block half the lane. But what was interesting was that the gentleman at the facility took my cardboard recycling and advised that he could not process my three metal pipes, and that I would have to go to Baxter. And so the responsible trash person that I am decided, okay, I'm going to endeavor to hop on the 400 southbound to Baxter. Unbeknownst to me, there was MTO roadwork there, which caused me to sit in traffic for 45 minutes to go two exits. And I wondered the whole time, the whole 45 minutes that I sat there idling in my car, whether the District of Muskoka had considered the carbon footprint involved in this whole scheme and how much impact it's going to have on our environment by having a pickup truck sitting there idling in bumper-to-bumper traffic inching forward over a weekend. Now, multiply that by many that are traveling southbound, receiving the same notice that the gentleman was articulating to me and passing that on to others that are bringing any metal whatsoever, and you can imagine what that's going to look like. So the shortsightedness of this program and the shift towards these transfer stations is just perplexing to me, and the fact that we would rather ignore the carbon footprint that's involved in all of this, or at the betterment of perhaps weight reduction is just, it's beyond me. But needless to say, at the same time, and I think Counselor Bocek will attest to this because I think he liked one of my comments, there was a Facebook flare-up on this very topic, again, specifically within Six Mile Lake. And again, the common misconception is we control garbage. We have not done an effective job in communicating to our constituents that it is not us who have changed the policy or the way that we do waste. And as such, I would like to see at, aside from how the costs are going to be returned back to ratepayers that are no longer dumping in the municipal bins, rather, are going to their own private use, I would like to see some form of communication be released to our constituency via maybe the tax roll mailer, or some way that we can reach out and aggregate out to everyone in our communities to say, this is not us. Stop throwing blame or casting blame on your municipal counselors, because we continue to get it, and district has not supported us whatsoever in helping to alleviate this pressure on local counselors and the blame that local counselors are receiving for the shift in policy and the way that waste collection is happening. So I'd love to see us be, send something out, you know, where we can reach out to everyone saying FYI, in case you didn't know, it is not us. Thank you.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I find myself in agreement with Counselor Graziano and Cooper on this. Constituents are misunderstand where this is all coming from and blaming the municipality for the sins of the district, in a manner of speaking. Having said that, there's a bag of garbage on the ground in front of the church parking lot in Honey Harbor, was there yesterday, and it's there this morning. So I don't know if we can arrange to get that picked up, but that was, I don't know whether it fell off a truck or somebody dropped it, but a full, big, black bag of garbage is sitting on the side of the road. Education's another thing here, and I just, thinking of comments made by Counselor Graziano, any construction waste should not be going in the garbage, no matter what. It should be going to the Baxter Ward Transfer Station, and that's an issue all the way along. But I'm totally sympathetic to this idea that the district thinks that boats and cars making more trips for garbage disposal is a good idea. It doesn't make any sense. My thought is counterintuitive right off the bat, but ultimately, getting word out to our constituents that we are working on a problem that's sourced at district, I think is extremely important to do.
Counselor Hazelton?
Yeah, I heard a resolution coming forward from Counselor Graziano about a notification that is going out with the next tax release, and I think that I would like to second that. I think it's absolutely critical that we proactively communicate the current status and that staff take upon, take the direction that a very powerful message is included with the communications that we send out anyways, and maybe it's published in all of the monthly, whatever they're called, monthly, no, well, GB Times? Okay. Whatever the monthly thing is, that it's published every month for the next six months because we need to get this message out. We need to be flooding the marketplace with this message because we are the only ones who are listening, but we have zero power to solve the problem that we are being faced with, and the district is making it worse and worse and worse. And as Counselor Cooper pointed out, for the district to come in and post big giant billboard signs, bins don't belong here, is absolutely insulting to every resident. So we need to get this message out, and I would like to second that resolution.
Thank you. Did you get the, the gist of them?
Oh. Did you have your hand up, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you, Chair. We have had this zero waste, clear and clear garbage bag information in our newsletter since March of this past year. I can't remember exactly if it's in the tax insert. I suspect it is, but you don't have to give us a resolution. It's going to stay in there until further notice. The best thing for council to do is to spread that information out to your constituents when you get the link from Tricia, but the Clear Bag Program identifies where to, where to communicate. It has a District of Muskoka logo on it. It doesn't have our logo on it. It talks about Engage Muskoka and shows a website on the district page that residents can look at, as well as a symbol of what you need to know.
You've missed the intent here. We want the message to be very clear that this is a district problem. We don't want to educate our residents anymore. You can keep doing it if you're already doing it. We don't want to educate them anymore about what they should be doing with their clear bags and everything else. What we want our residents to clearly understand is that we have done everything possible, and the district has failed us, and it is now clear that all the problems that they are whining about is a district problem and not a township problem. That message has to get out there over and over and over again.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure whether or not that is a, we can play with the language, but I don't know whether or not that's a positive message for our residents is to point the finger. So if it's the will of council, then a resolution may well be needed.
I think part of what we can do is inform our residents very strongly that if they have any concerns about solid waste, they should be speaking to the district. And I would add the province, because the province is part of the problem as well, in my personal opinion. But having said that, it is now Counselor Bocek's turn. Sorry, CEO Mary Aldy, do you want to jump in before we go to Counselor Bocek?
Yeah, apologies, Counselor Bocek. I just want to add as well that staff also get many calls. The operations department gets a lot of calls about waste. The frontline staff get a lot of calls. People come in. You know, it's a double-edged sword, because we try to promote these changes in the programs as much as possible to keep our residents informed. So what, so what we do is we forward the district's posts, because at one time, we're being told that our residents aren't getting the information, and they're relying on the township system. So we piggyback and forward the, forward the DMM's posts, and then automatically, some people unfortunately think that it's a township issue. So you're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. But we also get many calls, and we are very clear already saying, no, it's a, it's a district, it's a district responsibility.
Counselor Bocek.
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mayor. Just a comment on Counselor Graziano's statement. We live in a technically driven society now, and I was monitoring the Six Mile Lake site, and I seen the derogatory comments being pointed at the local counselor. Very unfair. So I wrote, stop it. I'm your district counselor. The blame falls on me, not on the local counselor. Then I shared all the information that the District of Muskoka had published on that website. The conversation changed. All of a sudden, we started getting comments like, oh, the Clear Bag Program was put in our township or our city quite some time ago, and it works very well. And some people said that my, my garbage has been reduced to half a bag now that I have a green bin and that I'm using the Clear Bags. So education, again, is key. We live in a technically driven society, whether that be Instagram, Facebook, whatever. But when you do get the message out, people understand, and then they have a better education of why this is happening, where it derived from. It was a simple statement by me saying, the province of Ontario mandated this to all municipalities. The municipalities had to the end of 2025 to comply with the provincial mandate. The engineering and public works at the District of Muskoka has given the lower-tier municipalities a certain timeframe to comply. All of a sudden, all the comments stopped on that, on that social media site. So it's key. I know two or three of the counselors here don't use social media or technology. We don't have a newspaper. We don't have a radio station. Nobody looks at the township website to get this information. You have to go and get it out to them because it's not getting to them in any other way. So I would suggest that it falls on the district counselors, which there's three of us sitting at these tables, to get that message out, and I don't think it's a township responsibility, or do we need to afford the efforts of township staff to be working on this? Thank you.
Counselor Predko.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Just wanted to comment, you know, follow up on the, I think in Ward One, I think there's a much better, having gone through this whole transition with the bins, I think people understand the district is the ones who are responsible now that I've had enough calls that they know that it's not the township. And it's unfortunate that we got the dumpsters don't belong here signs back in June, and you guys didn't get the same opportunity to be outraged through the summer. So anyways, better late than never. My real comment, though, is, you know, as the district is rolling forward on curbside collection on private roads, whether it's in the south end area or the north end, inland or outland, the one thing that they don't support is our bare bins. They tell you to go get a bare bin, but they will not engage with helping you source one or anything. And that is an area that, like the food cycler, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for the township to be maybe proactive in terms of having a bulk purchase agreement with somebody that people can go and pick one up and, or some other opportunity to help our residents get a lower price on something that could be $1,000 for leaving their garbage at the end of the driveway. I will leave that with the Director of Sustainability.
At the, Mr. Chair, we do have 350 food cyclers that we have bulk ordered, and a lot of residents in the Go Home area, when the new bins were removed, were very And a lot of residents in the Go Home area, when the new bins were removed, were very active in purchasing. So one of you council members made that message very clear because it was very successful in terms of sales. We make it super easy for people to pick up their food cycler at a local library, whatever branch works for them. In this case, it was Mactier. And we also deliver the items in Toronto. So I, I don't know whether or not we can do much more for the food cycler, but if you want cheaper bear bins, we can certainly review that.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we subsidize, but at least if there's a bulk purchase agreement with somebody, that that might provide an incentive for people who have curbside to actually take advantage of it.
Okay, I, I want to make some comments too, but you can go ahead first. You have to turn your mic on or it doesn't count. Try and move this forward. And I, I thought maybe as a suggestion, since somebody said it's more of the district councillor's responsibility, I'm not sure about that. I think the district has done what the district decided to do. That's the reality. But I'm wondering if we, if you, mayor and councillor Bocheck and myself tried to draft a statement of current situation and what the future might look like. If we could do a, you know, sort of a half page, one third, two thirds of a page, communique with some bullets and so forth. At least we, we get something that could be sent out by all of council and maybe posted on our website. So my suggestion is that we create this little working group, so to speak, to, to put together a communique. And obviously, other councillors want to weigh in. Would love to hear from them. Does that, would that help us achieve that? Would that be helpful?
I mean, I'd be willing to work on one. But I, I, I'd, what I would do if I were drafting one up is I'd make sure that my key points actually were consistent with where the district's at this point. So we're telling our residents, this is where, where the district's coming from. Because my comments are a couple full. One is, and I don't really want to say this, but there are on a number of occasions that I've been very disappointed with district communication, in part because they haven't been actually sensitive to residents in our part of the district. And as you say, bins don't belong here, and they're posting them at marinas where there's a regulation that requires bins. Like, I'm sorry. Anyway. The, the other thing that I want to comment is, yeah, I've heard, I've heard the district talk about expanding roadside pickup. But being on a private road, I've heard zero. I don't know if they're looking at a road or not. I don't know what's going on. It's.
Through your chair, yes. That's the same comments I get. At the north end, there's no communication.
I don't know where district's at. And yes, district, if you're watching this, you've heard this before. You'll hear it again. I wish I knew which roads they're actually looking at and they'd actually talk to the people on that road. A, whether or not they want it and whatnot. It, it, it's, it boggles the mind. I mean, either they're not doing it yet, which is possible. Or they're doing it without even telling the, the road owners or the road users that they're doing it. Councillor Predko.
From, thank you through your chairs. So my understanding is where they are currently is they have a, a draft agreement with road associations that is with the insurance company right now that is being wordsmithed to everybody's satisfaction. But they are expecting the road association presidents to contact them at the waste@muskoka.on.ca email address to indicate that they are interested. So it's, it's not that they're reaching out, but they're waiting for people to reach out.
Well, yeah, yeah. Very, in my mind, incomplete communication. And, and I, I'm concerned about that. I think in fairness to the district, part of the problem is the province and the province's inconsistency with the regulations. But I also think part of the problem is with the district when they don't appreciate or don't, they, they, they basically, how should I put it? This? They, they go on the assumption, the presumption that the province is right. And the province is not always right. But I, I have no problem with the idea here that, you know, the, the motion that was drafted, you know, I'll read it, is that staff be directed to create public communications when feasible, that waste management programs are the sole responsibility of District of Muskoka. We can do something like that. And I'm happy to try to draft up a current status note because I've had those phone calls on a semi regular basis with people saying, where, where are we at? And this is where we're at this week and this is where we're at next week. We're definitely working on it.
We're communicating that.
Yeah, yeah. And, 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 you know, as I think I mentioned yesterday, I mean, I had a meeting with the other township mayors with the district staff about, you know, the potential of a bag tag system. And I can tell you that in the committee meetings in, this is October, in October at district, they'll be hearing about it. And in, in the budget meetings, they'll be hearing about it. And district already knows to some degree what they're going to be, the staff, what they're going to hear because they've already heard it from me. This has been, this has been frustrating. We've been working at this for years. We've failed to come up with the best solution for everybody because of various roadblocks. And I can blame everybody or nobody when I say that because I'm not trying to pinpoint one or two people. It's just the way it's all evolved. And unfortunately, this project is not over. It's, it's, it's in progress. And I think it's going to continue to be in progress. And I hope, well, I know that by next spring, when many of our seasonal residents return, they're going to have to be making some changes and depending upon where they have their residents, how they get to their residence, whether they go through a marina, whether they go through a, a landing, whether they drive to their back door. Everybody's going, the, 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 the changes will vary. And, and we know that some of the changes have been successful and some of them have been unsuccessful or less successful over the last little while. And, and I'm going to use the example of Go Home Lake. And, and to me, they considered, what I heard from district, maybe it's six weeks, I can't remember exactly, a while ago. They were very pleased with their lakeside pickup because they figured about 200 residents or 200 properties were using it each week. And, you know, that's close to a 50% use. And I'm thinking, okay, great. But the other 50%, what, what are they doing? And I heard from one person that just blew me away. Now, this was a councillor, not staff. Well, probably because the other half of the garbage was, was inappropriate garbage. It was probably commercial or what have you. No, that just shows the lack of understanding of our circumstances. I don't know how much more waste in August went down the highway. Not to other places in our township, but to other communities, other municipalities, because they weren't able to, because they weren't exiting at about the same time that a garbage truck was parked there. Anyway, I could go on. We all could go on. I'm hearing two things out of this. One is a, a, a motion, and I'm going to have it moved by councillor Cooper, signed by councillor Hazleton, that the staff be directed to create public communications when feasible, that waste management programs are the sole responsibility of District of Muskoka. All those in favor? And I'm also going to take direction that try to, try to come up with a, I'm, I called it a bulletin. I'm going to try to draft up a bulletin and I'll review it with council and to, that we can use as a communication device on, on the one-off conversations that we have. We may even post it. I'm not sure. We'll see how it unfolds. All right. I'm thinking, maybe we should end this meeting, take a lunch break and get back together at two o'clock. So moved by councillor Jarvis, second by councillor Predko. Be it resolved, the committee hold is now adjourned at 1:14 PM to reconvene on November 4th, 2025, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And we are reconvened.